And welcome to the May 2nd, 2023 Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners Board Meeting. Madam Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Barnett.
Here.
Commissioner Baxter. Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sacks. Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward. Thank you.
Alrighty. And we are going to call on Commissioner Moreno to please lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance, and if you're able to, please rise.
Dear God, as we gather here today, we pray that we are ever mindful of opportunities to render our service to fellow citizens and to our community, keeping in mind always the enduring values of life exerting our efforts on those areas and on those things upon which future generations can build with confidence. Let us continue to strive to make a better world. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Where does this go? Alright, Madam Administrator, do we have any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the board, we have on page 27, 3J3, which is a revised summary clarifying the item. That concludes the additions, deletions, and substitutions.
Alright, is there a motion to adopt the agenda as amended?
So moved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Great. Moving on to our consent agenda, would anyone like to pull any of the items from our consent agenda? Not seeing anyone. Would somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion from Commissioner Bernard, a second from Commissioner Barnett. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries seven to zero. Moving on to special presentations, we have a few this morning. It's great to see so many folks here today. And we will get started, and who's first up?
If I could please have Tanya Davis-Johnson and her team come up, please?
Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. So today we are declaring May 1st through the 7th, 2023, as Palm Beach County Small Business Week, whereas every year since 1963, the President of the United States has issued a proclamation announcing National Small Business Week that recognizes the critical contributions of America's entrepreneurs and small business owners. And whereas, more than half of Americans either own or work for a small business, and they create about two out of three, two out of every three new jobs in the U.S. each year. And whereas, there are 32.5 million small businesses in the U.S., 2.8 million small businesses in Florida, and 51,563 small businesses in Palm Beach County. Whereas, May 1 through 7, May 1st through 7, 2023, has been designated as National Small Business Week. And part of this week, the U.S. Small Business Administration highlights the impact of outstanding entrepreneurs and small business owners and others from all 50 states and the U.S. territories. Whereas, as part of National Small Business Week, the Office of Equal Business Opportunity, that is committed to monitoring the conditions affecting small businesses while serving as an advocate for small businesses in Palm Beach County, celebrates and recognizes the contributions and importance of small businesses of the local economy. Whereas, in celebration of National Small Business Week, the Office of Equal Business Opportunity will host and participate in a series of workshops, May 1st through 5th, to provide assistance to entrepreneurs starting their small business, local small businesses growing and expanding their businesses, and teach small businesses how to do business with the Palm Beach County. Whereas, the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to join in celebrating Small Business Week. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this day of May, 2023, that May 1st through 7th, 2023, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Palm Beach County Small Business Week.
Thank you, Commissioner Baxter and Board. Thank you for your support of the Office of Equal Business Opportunity and the assistance that we provide to local small businesses. We were able to kick off Small Business Week yesterday at the Cultural Council with our advocacy breakfast that was hosted by our Advisory Committee. On today, we have a Get Certified with Palm Beach County workshop. On Wednesday, we will network with small businesses. And on Thursday, we have a Food Truck Fund Day, which will feature local small business food truck owners. So we ask you to bring your dollars and bring your appetite over to the Four Points parking lot. And then on Friday, we will conclude with our Second Annual Hard Hats and Suits. I'd like to recognize two of our Advisory Board members that are here with me, Mr. Lesko, Bob Lesko, and Ms. Amy Angelo. They are members of the Advisory Committee, and we couldn't do what we do without the support of the Board, but more importantly, without the support of County Administrator Baker and Assistant County Administrator Miller. So thank you so much, and if your schedule will allow, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. While they're taking their photo, could I go ahead and begin calling for our Building Safety Month attendees? We have Doug Wise, David Dorita, Dave Colada, Colado, sorry, Bob Hemp, Michael Gogar, Michael Fox, Michael Schubert, Jan Rodriguez, Michelle Carter, James Law, Afet McIntosh, and John Blake. Okay. Are they coming? Okay, so for this proclamation, the Board of County Commissioners is declaring May 2023 as Building Safety Month. Whereas, Palm Beach County is committed to recognizing our growth and strength depends on the safety and economic value of the homes, buildings, and infrastructure that serve our citizens in everyday life and in times of natural disasters. And whereas, our confidence in the structural integrity of these buildings that make up our community is achieved through the devotion of building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safety construction of buildings. And whereas, dedicated members of the Palm Beach County Building Division and Fire Rescue Department implement and enforce the highest quality codes to protect residents in the buildings where they live, work, and play. And whereas, our community benefits economically from the Florida Building Code and Florida Fire Prevention Code, which helps protect the public from natural disasters such as hurricanes, wildfires, and floods. And whereas, the 2023 Building Safety Month theme, "It Starts With You", encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, fire prevention, and disaster mitigation, and recognize that countless lives have been saved due to the implementation of safety codes by local and state agencies. And whereas, Building Safety Month promotes the commitment of local and state building departments, fire prevention bureaus, and federal agencies to improve building safety in the community and acknowledge the essential service they provide to all of us in protecting lives and property. Therefore, be it proclaimed by this Board of County Commissioners Building Safety Month. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. We appreciate the support that the Board of County Commissioners and the Commission has shown to our team. This is just the tip of the iceberg. We have about 300 people all in, working to promote building safety in our county.
While they take a photo, can I please have Sherri Howard and team come up, including Jonathan Brown, Mary Wymer, and Kelly Smallridge?
Yeah.
Slide behind you, guys. Perfect.
Good morning, everyone.
It is my honor to declare May 8th through 12th, 2023, as Economic Development Week. Whereas, communities rely on economic development professionals to promote economic well-being and quality of life. For communities in Palm Beach County, this means coordinating activities that create, retain, and expand jobs in order to facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. Whereas, economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships in the chambers of commerce, universities, and variety of other institutions. Whereas, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. Whereas, 94% of businesses in Palm Beach County have less than 25 employees, and these small businesses with their dedication and entrepreneurial spirits are a valuable part of our economy. Whereas, Palm Beach County directly partners with the Business Development Board of Palm Beach County and Palm Beach County Black Business Investment Corporation, Center for Enterprise Opportunity, Florida Atlantic Research and Development Authority, Florida Atlantic University Tech Runway, Palm Beach County Film and Television Commission, and Center for UPS or Target Industries through technical assistance, loans, and other incentives. Whereas, the County's Department of Housing and Economic Development, business loan programs that provide long-term loans with low interest rates to small businesses looking to grow in Palm Beach County, which has resulted in the creation of 2,241 new jobs and in capital investment of 146 million. Whereas, during the last year, Palm Beach County and its economic development partners created and retained over 4,600 jobs. And whereas, Economic Development Week reminds us of the importance of this celebration that supports expanding business opportunities and transforming neighborhoods into balanced communities. Now, therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session the second day of May, 2023, that May 8th through 12th, 2023, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Economic Development Week. Thank you, everyone.
Morning, Commissioner, Board. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Commissioner, for this proclamation. I'm going to introduce Sherri Howard and then Kelly Smallridge. But I do want to let everyone know, this is the economic development team that provides the economic activity throughout the county, as well as the CDT team. And so thank you all so much for your support.
Thank you, Jonathan, and thank you, Commissioner. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners, and Administrator Baker. Thanks to the support of the Board and the County Commission, or County Administration, we have programs to assist every-sized business, whether it's a startup or a small business, with technical assistance to loans and other incentives for established businesses, whether they're domestic or international, through the Department of Economic Development and Housing, and through our contract partners that are here, that have joined us, including Leah Gaines from the Center for Enterprise Opportunity, Sebron Smith from the TED Center, Pamela Stewart from the Black Business Investment Corp., Jessica Beaver from FAU Tech Runway, Andrew Duffel from the Research Park at FAU, and Kelly Smallridge and her team from the Business Development Board. Also with us are members of our Economic Development Cross-Departamental Team, demonstrating the county's continued commitment to maximizing jobs for every resident in Palm Beach County. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Mayor and County Commissioners. It is absolutely a pleasure to serve as your economic development partner, to bring the highest quality of jobs to this area. We appreciate that you've entrusted us to lead the way in bringing aviation, fintech, manufacturing, logistics, and a wide variety of good-quality jobs. We now lead the state with the highest average salary. It's jobs for all residents of Palm Beach County, and we appreciate the 40-year partnership. I also thank Jonathan, Sherri, and the county's PZMB for being the best partners over multiple decades. This organization and our partnership with you is viewed as the number-one economic development board, and all of us together and everyone behind me is the number-one economic development model in the state of Florida. Thank you so much for your longstanding support and collaboration.
I said try. Some people can stand on the ledge.
Tall people in the back. Go back that way.
Okay, while they're doing, getting ready for their picture, I have the proclamation for Nurses Week. And if I could have Cynthia Tagliaferri and Deidre Cross come? Is there anyone else with your groove that wanted to come up? Okay. Meritus Quinto and Angela Bonnaby. Okay, this proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, declaring May 6th through 12th, 2023, as Nurses Week. Whereas, registered nurses in the United States constitute our nation's largest healthcare profession, and whereas, the depth and breadth of the registered nursing profession meets the different and emergent healthcare needs of the American population in a wide range of settings. And whereas, the American Nurses Association, the voice for registered nurses in this country, is working to chart a new course for a healthy nation that relies on increasing access to primary and preventative healthcare and better utilization of all our nation's registered nursing resources. And whereas, professional nursing is an indispensable component of the safety and quality of care of hospitalized and non-hospitalized patients. And whereas, the demand for registered nursing services will be greater than ever because of the aging American population, emerging health challenges, continuing expansion of life-sustaining technologies, and explosive growth of home healthcare services. And whereas, more qualified registered nurses are needed in the future to meet the increasingly complex needs of healthcare consumers. And the cost-effective, safe, and high-quality healthcare services provided by registered nurses will be an increasingly important component of our healthcare delivery system in the future. And whereas, along with the American Nurses Association, the Florida Nurses Association has declared May as Nurses Month, with the theme "You Make a Difference", to honor the positive impact that nurses have on people's lives. And whereas, the residents of Palm Beach County are urged to celebrate registered nurses' accomplishments and efforts to improve our healthcare system and show their support, not just during this month, but at every opportunity throughout the year. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, assembled this day, on the second day of May, that May 6th through 12th, 2023, in Palm Beach County is hereby declared Nurses Week.
Thank you, Mayor and County Commissioners. Cynthia couldn't be here today. She is the Director for the Southeast Region, which comprises five counties. So she is currently getting one this morning from Indian River and tonight, St. Lucie. So she couldn't be here at Palm Beach. So I am here as her representative here with my colleagues. I want to thank you for this honor. Every year from May 6th to Florence Knight and Gail's birthday, which is May 12th, that is designated as National Nurse Week, and it celebrates and acknowledges nurses and the hard work that they put into making patients feel comfortable. This year, as she said, the theme is "You Make a Difference", and this was selected to encourage nurses, individuals, employers, other healthcare professionals, and community leaders, just like you all, to recognize and promote the vast contributions and positive impact of the 4.2 million American nurses, and Florida ranks third in the nation with the highest of about 200,000 active nurses. In Palm Beach County, there are over 7, or over 34,000 licensed nurses, and they are essential in every healthcare setting, hospitals, nursing homes, ambulatory care, patients' homes. But 75% of them are actively working on the front lines. And the very core of nursing, caring for patients at the bedside, remains totally unchanged. Nurses bring that special compassion and concern for the patient and for the patient's family, no matter where they are practicing. They hold fast to that very special covenant that nurses have with the people of Florida and play a vital role in educating people how to prevent illness and promote good health. Nurses are essential, not only to every healthcare setting, but more importantly, to every single person and their health. We thank you so much for this honor today.
Good morning. I would like to invite Major Michael Devoter, Major Darlin Morris, Captain Ronald Wilson, and Division Manager Juna Thomas to join me, please. Today, I have the honor of issuing a proclamation declaring May 7th through 13th, 2023, as National Correctional Officers and Employees Week. I didn't forget anybody, did I? Okay. Alright, excellent. Whereas, one of the primary goals of correction officers and employees is to provide an effective correction system that concentrates on quality for all inmates in its care, custody, and control. And whereas, Palm Beach County's dedicated correctional officers and employees are essential to the success of our criminal justice process. And whereas, correctional employees encounter daily exposure to a hostile environment with many of the most dangerous individuals in society. And whereas, these employees perform their duties in a professional and dedicated manner. And whereas, all citizens are asked to join in expressing appreciation for the outstanding service of correctional officers and employees. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session the second day of May, 2023, that May 7th through the 13th, 2023, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Correctional Officers and Employees Week.
Thank you. On behalf of Sheriff Brad Shaw, Chief DiMario, we thank the Board of County Commissioners and County Administrator for recognizing the dedicated men and women that work inside the jails every day. As the proclamation explained, it is a thankless job from time to time, but there are over 1,000 professionals working, and sworn and non-s sworn, working in the jails today. We thank you for your recognition. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Well, as they're taking pictures, I'll go ahead and get started. As you all are well aware, we had a pretty horrific tornado touchdown in Palm Beach Gardens and North Palm Beach, District 1. And I want to just, as I'm giving the proclamation for Public Works Week, I want to do a shout-out to the City of Palm Beach Gardens, their manager, their fire rescue, their police, City, I should say, the Village of North Palm Beach, their city manager, their fire rescue, their police, and our Public Works Department for being on the scene in a crisis. 11 minutes of heck, I would use a better word, but that really affected a lot of people, and very thankfully, no one was killed. Only one person was taken away by ambulance. And our teams were on the ground immediately, cleared the roads. They're still cleaning now, but as we recognize today's proclamation, I would like to do the proclamation declaring May 20... Hold on a second, I'm getting out of line here. David Ricks, Joanne Keller, Deb Drum, Mike Stahl, Paul Litten, Ismae Ayla, Laura Beebe, Ali Bayat, Dan Pellwitz. These are the folks behind the scenes that make everything work in our county. So I'm happy to be declaring May 21st through 27th, 2023, as National Public Works Week. Whereas, 2023 marks the 63rd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association and the Canadian Public Works Association. And whereas, National Public Works Week was established in 1960 to help increase public understanding of the public works industry professionals who work tirelessly to protect our public health, safety, and welfare. Whereas, the county's public works team includes the Engineering and Public Works Department, Department of Environmental Resources Management, Facilities Department, and Operations Department, Water Utilities Department, Solid Waste Authority, and Department of Airports. And whereas, these public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital, are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people in Palm Beach County. Whereas, these services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, including engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas, it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Palm Beach County to gain knowledge of and maintain an interest in understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session the second day of May, 2023, that May 21 through 27, 2023, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Commissioner. All departments here want to thank you, Commissioner Moreno, Mayor, Vice Mayor, the members of Board of County Commissioners, as well as the County Administrator. Collected these departments do an annual amount of over $250 million worth of capital work. We are honored to provide public service to the 1.5 million citizens of Palm Beach County. Together, we are responsible for providing our nation transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. We work together proudly as an integrated team on the leadership of our County Administrator. Thank you. Thank you again.
Good morning again. Would Captain Krivda, Sergeant Daly, and Deputy Cologne, please join me? A proclamation of the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County declaring May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day. And of course Blackjack. Thank you. Whereas, from the beginning of this nation, law enforcement officers have played an important role in safeguarding the rights and freedom which are guaranteed by the U.S. Constitution and protecting the lives and property of our citizens. And whereas, through the constant application of new procedures and techniques, officers are becoming more efficient in enforcing our laws. And whereas, it is important that people know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police departments, and the necessity of cooperating with them in maintaining law and order. And whereas, it is fitting and proper to express our gratitude for the dedicated service and courageous deeds of law enforcement officers and for the contributions they have made to the security and well-being of county residents. to the security and well-being of county residents. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, assembled in regular session this second day of May 2023, that May 15th, in Palm Beach County, is hereby proclaimed Peace Officers Memorial Day.
Thank you. On behalf of Sheriff Bradshaw, thank you for this honor. Short. This is the most fun we have all day. So may I please have James Green, Faith Mantra, Taruna Malhatra, Tammy Limpy, Teresa Pizzicino, and Susan Koster? Or not? Are you by yourself? Oh, here we go. It is my honor to present-- this proclamation for older Americans. Many of you may know I have-- I'm blessed to still have my parents, who are-- probably going to kill me for saying this on TV-- 87 and 90, going strong, but it is with the support of others in their age bracket that keep them alive and young. So I would like to declare May 2023 as Palm Beach County Older Americans Month. Whereas Palm Beach County includes a growing number of older Americans who enrich our community through their diverse life experiences; and whereas the Palm Beach County Community Services Department's Division of Senior and Veteran Services is committed to strengthening the elder community by administering programs and services designed to promote healthier lifestyles and independent living for older adults in their homes and communities; and whereas the Division provides a continuum of care to help older adults live in the least restrictive, yet most cost-effective environments suitable to their needs; and whereas the Division of Senior and Veteran Services works in conjunction with the Aging Network to assist elderly persons through case management and in-home services to connect them with others, playing a vital role in their health and well-being, and that of our communities; and whereas Palm Beach County can work to build an even better community for older residents by not limiting our thinking about aging, exploring, and combating stereotypes, emphasizing the many positive aspects of aging, inspiring older adults to push past traditional boundaries, and embracing our community's diversity. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this second day of May 2023, that May 23, 23, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Palm Beach County Older Americans Month. And I'm so happy to do this, not in a mask, because I remember doing this at the North County Senior Center with a mask on several years ago. So I'm happy to be doing this in person here today. Thank you. Who wants to say some words?
I'll begin. Thank you very much, Commissioner Marino, Mayor Commissioners. We really appreciate the recognition of our seniors. You know, a third of Palm Beach County's population is made up of seniors, and so critically important that we have support services for them so that they can remain healthy and socially active. And I'm going to have one of our staff, Susan, to come up and make some comments about some of the work that we're doing. Susan?
Hi there. Thank you for your support. I'm a registered dietitian, and I work in the nutrition program for seniors and veteran services. So to quickly ramble off some numbers, in 2022, we came back from the COVID pandemic, and we served over 312,000 meals to seniors in our county last year. This year, we have about 1,375 seniors that partake of our services either in their homes, if they're homebound for nutrition meals. And then we also have our Congregate Meal Program that I'm responsible for, and we serve those folks. They come to our senior centers and partake in social activities and get nutrition. We provide nutrition counseling and many other social services to the seniors. So thank you for your support.
While they're taking their picture this morning, could I ask Catherine Murphy, the CEO of NAMI Palm Beach County and co-chair of Get Your Green On Committee, Dr. Seth Bernstein, Executive Vice President of Community Investment of United Way Palm Beach County, and co-chair of Birth to 22, and Tammy Fields, our Palm Beach County Director of Youth Services Department and co-chair of Birth to 22, becoming a trauma-sensitive community action team. Be up here for this proclamation. And anyone else you all have brought along with you? I can see we have a lot of green on. I think before I read this proclamation, I just want to thank you all for what you're doing to inform our community and educate our community as to mental health services that we have in Palm Beach County, but more importantly, to destigmatize mental health awareness and mental health health, because it's the cornerstone of our health as human beings. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas everyone experiences times of stress and struggles in their lives, especially in the last couple of years due to our pandemic and social and racial injustices, where one in four adults and one in five youth ages 13 to 18 experience serious mental illness; and 60% of adults and 50% of youth do not receive the treatment necessary for their mental health needs due to limited or no knowledge of the need, barriers to care, or fear and shame. Research recognizes that adverse childhood experiences, referred to as ACEs, which include, but not are limited, to physical, emotional, and sexual abuse, physical and emotional neglect, household dysfunction, untreated mental illness, or incarceration of a household member, domestic violence, and/or divorce involving household members, are traumatic experiences that can have a profound effect on a child's developing brain and body and can result in poor physical and mental health during childhood and adulthood. And whereas, community understanding and the available supports and services can greatly impact on a person's ability to handle the stress and struggle and move forward; and whereas promoting mental health and wellness leads to a higher productivity, better educational outcomes, lower crime rates, stronger economies, lower healthcare costs, improved family life, improved quality of life, and increased lifespan; and whereas, studies show that the effects of ACEs are felt by people regardless of race, ethnicity, religion, gender, sexual orientation, or socioeconomic status. And whereas each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, faith-based organization, nonprofit agency, and citizens share accountabilities for the community's mental health needs and has responsibility to promote mental wellness and support prevention efforts. And whereas, the importance of attending to mental health has become even more pronounced in the last few years due to COVID-19, political and social unrest, and the resulting economic crisis. Isolation, sickness, grief, job loss, food instability, and loss of routines has increased the need for mental health services. So whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County recognizes the impact of awareness and education, access to services, and acceptance of the importance of mental health and well-being to a person's overall success, and supports the implementation of trauma-informed approaches throughout the system of care. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on this second day of May 2023, that May 2023, in Palm Beach County, is hereby proclaimed Mental Health Awareness and Trauma-Informed Care Month. Congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, Ms. Baker, for having us here this morning. Commissioner Weiss, Mayor Weiss, love your green tie. You should check out Tammy's fingernails while you're up here. But I just wanted to take a minute to thank you on behalf of the Birth to 22 United for Brighter Futures Alliance, which is a collaboration with over 300 members locally. It is co-chaired by your very own Tammy Fields and Dr. Lisa Williams-Taylor, the CEO of Children's Services Council, who I'm sure you all know well. As shown in the proclamation, you know, the mental health needs have just dramatically increased. And, you know, this is the time now to really care about our coworkers, our neighbors, our loved ones, our friends, and just reach out to one another and, you know, give a little bit of support to one another. If there was ever a time, now is definitely the time. I have the privilege of co-chairing the Becoming a Trauma-Informed Committee of the Birth to 22 Work Group. I co-chair that with your very own Tammy Fields. We meet regularly to share best practices around mental health and trauma-informed care, do lots of trainings. And we're the committee sponsor for the Get Your Green campaign that Catherine Murphy, behind me, co-chairs along with Lauren Zuckman and dozens of community members helping with the effort. There's lots of ways to get involved this month. Wearing green, wearing the stickers is one thing. Catherine will talk a little bit more about that. I do want to recognize, actually, your very own Tammy Fields again. There was an international conference focusing on trauma-informed care, and she actually won an award for her work and our work here. And I would love to just give her a round of applause for that. So with that, thank you again for being here. Thank you for everyone for supporting mental health efforts in our own community. And I'll turn it over to Catherine. Thank you very much, Mayor.
Good morning. Thank you, Mayor Weiss. Thank you, County Commission. Thank you, County Administrator Baker. On behalf of the Get Your Green On Committee, which is comprised of dozens of local community partners, I'd like to thank you all for proclaiming May as Mental Health Awareness Month. And I'd like to invite you and the entire community to join us this month. We are asking everyone to wear green on May 18th. Why green? Because it's the national color for mental health awareness. And so we're really excited to be creating such a robust effort here in Palm Beach County. There are so many events planned. You can learn more at GetYourGreenOn.org. And the month did kick off with a youth summit and a walk. And we're really excited that the county is outside in the lobby sharing information about all of the great events that the county library system's planning, Youth Services Department is doing a great series of lunch and learns, trainings. There are so many more events. So please check it out at GetYourGreenOn.org. Wear green on May 18th. Thank you very much.
Thank you to members of the board for this proclamation. We are also going to be sending you an invitation to an event on May 18th, which will be celebrating the superpower of mental health. And so y'all will receive an invitation to that. And I also wanted to highlight that our Parks Department has put out a green booklet on activities for mental awareness when you're outside and enjoying the parks. We have found, as we have been holding community conversations with the young people and families, that mental health is the number one issue that is being raised. So this proclamation is really important. And thank you to FDO and County Administrator Baker for authorizing that our courthouse and Four Points will be lit up green during the month of May. Thank you.
Good morning. What a wonderful county we have. Now, this is all about water. So if I could have Sherri McCorkle from the South Florida Water Management District come up, and of course, Mr. Ali Bayat, Palm Beach County Water Utility, we are going to talk about water today. It's a proclamation declaring May 14th to the 20th, 2023, as Water Reuse Week. I guess we should all have a glass of water and toasts this. Whereas, safe, clean, and sustainable water resources are essential to Florida's environment, economy, citizens, and visitors. And whereas water supplies are finite, the state's population in need for water resources continues to increase. And whereas, water reuse provides a means for conserving and augmenting Florida's precious water resources. Whereas Florida has risen to be a national leader in water reuse, we reuse approximately 900 million gallons of reclaimed water per day, more than 50% of the wastewater treated to conserve freshwater supplies and recharge our freshwater resources. And whereas Florida's permitted reuse capacity is more than 2.4 billion gallons per day, which is approximately 87% of Florida's total permitted capacity for all domestic wastewater treatment facilities. And whereas, May, typically a dry month when water demands are high, is a good time to educate the public on reuse and how they can help save Florida's precious water resources through water reuse. So whereas, Water Reuse Florida, the state section of the association has proclaimed the week of May 14th through the 20th, 2023, as Florida Water Reuse Week. And whereas, the Palm Beach County Water Utilities Department has implemented a water reuse program and encourages efficient and effective use of reclaimed water. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session this second day of May 2023, that May 14th to the 20th, in Palm Beach County, is hereby proclaimed Water Reuse Week. Congratulations. Thank you all.
Would you like to say something? I would take some pictures.
Mayor Weiss, Mayor Commissioners, Ms. Baker, I know water is top priority for all of you. Thank you for your leadership. Appreciate it.
I'd like to invite up members of the Jewish Family Services, Fird and Gladys Alpert, Jewish Federation South, the Jewish Federation North, Brian Seymour, Joe Gahn, and Jeffrey Dawson, Combat Anti-Semitism Movement, and the ADL Lonnie Wilk, the Deputy Regional Director for the Anti-Defamation League of Florida Region. And as they're coming up, I just-- as I'm going to be declaring May 2023 as 2023 as Jewish American Heritage Month. Being Jewish in Palm Beach County, I think this year we have been tested, but we have risen, I believe, the Jewish community. The entire community has risen beyond the hatred that's been brought to us in this county. And we will continue to stand up and fight back against hatred where it comes from, whoever it comes from. And so I believe this proclamation this year is even more meaningful. It's always very meaningful, but I think it tells more of our community and our willingness to combat hate wherever it comes from. So it is my honor to be with you all this morning and to be able to make this presentation. Whereas Jewish immigrants in America, since their arrival to our shores in the 17th century, have played a central role in the creation, growth, freedom, prosperity, and strength of the United States of America. And the American Jewish community has since grown to more than 6 million. And whereas the biblical and contemporary history of the Jewish people and the enduring values of the Jewish faith were vital sources of information for the founding of our country, the Civil Rights Movement, America's global leadership in the cause of freedom, the commitment to social justice, and many of our nation's most central tenets. Whereas through core Jewish beliefs such as the creation of man in the image of God, the infinite value of every human life, the need for a weekly Sabbath, and the importance of education in the lives of children, the Jewish community has helped to define America's character and values. Whereas Jewish citizens who settled in West Palm Beach in 1892 played a central role in political, economic, and social development, and served in the armed forces of the United States and Florida National Guard. And whereas, on April 20th, 2006, President George W. Bush proclaimed that May would be Jewish American Heritage Month. The announcement was a crowning achievement in an effort by the Jewish Museum of Florida and the South Florida Jewish Community Leaders that resulted in resolutions introduced by Representative Debbie Wasserman Schultz of Florida and Senator Arlen Specter of Pennsylvania, urging the president to proclaim a month that would recognize the history of Jewish contributions to American culture. The resolutions passed unanimously, first in the House of Representatives in December-- first in the House of Representatives in December of 2005, and later in the Senate in February of 2006. And whereas with the recent rise in local hate crimes, the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners adopted an ordinance prohibiting the unauthorized projection of texts, graphics, and logos or artwork onto a building, structure, or any other place, including public spaces, without the consent of the owner or person in control of the building. And Florida House Bill 269 is a bipartisan bill targeting anti-Semitic incidents. And whereas Jewish American Heritage Month is a time to celebrate the more than 350 years of American Jewish history and encourages awareness of the many Jewish contributions to our history, culture, military, science, economy, government, and artistic and intellectual life. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session on the second day of May 2023, that May 2023 in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed Jewish American Heritage Month.
Thank you very much, Mayor and County Commissioners, for this important and very meaningful proclamation. I'm Lawrence Millstein, Director of the American Jewish Committee, AJC Palm Beach County Regional Office. The United States has many Heritage Months that celebrate the various communities that form the beautiful mosaic of our country, including Black History Month, Women's History Month, Hispanic Heritage Month, and many more. By recognizing Heritage Months, we learn about one another. We honor the richness of our diverse nation, and we strengthen the fabric of American society. As today's proclamation notes, May was first declared Jewish American Heritage Month in 2006 by President George W. Bush. Since then, Presidents Bush, Obama, Trump, and Biden have all issued proclamations for Jewish American Heritage Month, which celebrate Jewish Americans and encourages all Americans to learn more about Jewish heritage and contributions to the United States. At a time when American Jews are feeling vulnerable amidst an alarming rise in anti-Semitism, including here in our own community, we cannot think of a more important time to celebrate the many contributions of Jews to our society, contributions made since the first group of Jews arrived in New Amsterdam in 1654. Over the past 369 years, Jewish Americans have given to their communities and to this nation as loyal and patriotic citizens, always grateful for the safe harbor that America provided for them. Jewish Americans have served in the government, the military, won Nobel Prizes, headed universities and corporations, advanced medicine, created and performed enduring works of performing and visual art, written great American novels, and become emblems of justice as members of the Supreme Court, and so much more. Perhaps most importantly, American Jews have always pushed America to live up to its promise as a nation that upholds freedom and justice for all. This month, we hope that Palm Beach County residents will join us in celebrating the many contributions of Jewish Americans and that we will all learn a little more about the history, the culture, the accomplishments, and yes, even the diversity of the American Jewish community. So on behalf of the American Jewish community, thank you for this very important proclamation at a very timely and meaningful moment for the Jewish community. Thank you so much for the honor.
Okay, let's go on to the Tourist Development Council. Been waiting very patiently here. This is a proclamation declaring May 7th to the 13th as National Travel and Tourism Week. And to do this, if I could please have come forward Emmanuel Perry from the TDC, Jorge Pescara, President and CEO of Discover the Palm Beaches, Dave Lawrence, President and CEO of the Cultural Council for Palm Beach County, Michelle Hillary, Film Commissioner for the Palm Beach County Film and Television Commission, George Lindley, Executive Director of the Palm Beach County Sports Commission, and Dave Anderson, the General Manager of the Palm Beach County Convention Center. Whereas the travel industry is critical to growing our local economy. And whereas the Palm Beach County Tourist Development Council's agencies, including Discover the Palm Beaches, the Cultural Council for Palm Beach County, Palm Beach County Sports Commission, the Palm Beach County Film Commission, and the Palm Beach County Convention Center developed marketing and sales strategies to support tourism, which generates an annual direct visitor spending of over $9 billion in the local economy. Whereas the Palm Beach County tourism industry in 2022 welcomed 9.2 million visitors, who were serviced by more than 100,000 jobs. And whereas the Tourist Development Council and its contracted agencies provide the destination awareness that has driven Palm Beach County's positive growth in tourism performance. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, the second day of May 2023, that May 17th through the 13th, how about May 7th through the 13th, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed National Travel and Tourism Week. And citizens are urged to join in the special observance of National Travel Rally Day, May 12th. Be it further proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, that this proclamation is duly sealed and executed by the members of the board. Thank you so much for all you do. And now let's get going, right? Congratulations.
Good morning, good morning. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sacks. And on behalf of the Tourist Development Council and our partnering agencies, we want to thank the Commissioners for recognizing, and Madam Baker. We want to thank the Commissioners on recognizing the importance of tourism and what it brings to this county. We supported over 100,000 jobs and created an economic impact of $10 billion. This year, we will continue to look to grow the Palm Beaches and continue to champion it as America's favorite destination. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioners, for this honor. It's, for me, it's a bittersweet type of occasion. I'm moving on at the end of this year. So I want to say it's been a privilege to lead Discover the Palm Beaches, our destination, marketing organization for the county. I want to thank you for allowing us to be the creators and the protectors of our brand, our tourism brand, and for the opportunity to tell the story of America's first resort destination around the world, around the country, around the state, to achieve record visitation in 2022. And we are on pace to achieve record visitation again in 2023 and the top economic impact ever for tourism in the county. We encourage the Commission to continue to support tourism because customers have endless possibilities of options to choose from around the world. The competition is truly fierce. We encourage you also to accelerate the development of a Tourism Master Plan to chart a beautiful roadmap for the future of tourism, of sustainable tourism for the county so that the next generation can enjoy all our tourism assets and everything we have to offer, not only to visitors, but to residents. Because at the end of the day, tourism is all about elevating the quality of life of our residents. And with that, thank you very much for your opportunity, for this opportunity.
They save the best for last. But I cannot present this proclamation without having the best golfer that's ever served on the Board of County Commissioners to join me. Wood River Beach Councilperson, Dr. Julia Botell, Cynthia Beckton, Gillian Constable, F. Malkin Cunningham, Gladys E. Harris, S. C. Knowles, John H. Knowles, Malachi Knowles, George Lindley, and Linda Stock, if you can please come forward. It is a pleasure to present this proclamation declaring May 25th through the 29th, 2023, as African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame Week. Whereas the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame was established to recognize golf pioneers, honor the legacy and achievements of all African-Americans involved in golf since the early 19th century, and to shine a very bright everlasting light on the accomplishments of the exceptional individuals and organizations that have made significant contributions to golf, growing the name of golf and the entire golfing industry. Whereas the goals of the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame are to establish a place where the rich, colorful, and proud history of African-Americans in golf is displayed for the world to see, provide for an interactive golf training experience, acquire and assemble a comprehensive collection of African-American golf memorabilia, and build a permanent world-class golf museum in Riviera Beach for generations to come, especially for our youth. And whereas since 2005, the AAGHOF, African-American Collegiate, AAC, and the Youth Golfers Hall of Fame, YGHOF, and the Inner City Youth Golfers, Inc., established an annual historic event at which the African-American golfing community can network, interact, and share golf stories since the 1800s to honor all of the outstanding individuals and organizations who have substantially increased public awareness of African-American excellence, both on the golf course and our communities. And whereas early honorees inducted into the AAGHOF included Joseph Bartholomew, James W. Black, Robert Brock, Avis L. Brown Riley, George Brown, Gordon Brown, Pete Brown, James E. Clyburn, F. Malkin Cunningham, Sr., Arthur L. Davis, Sr., Agatha M. Delancey, James Lacy, Jim Dent, William Bill Dickey, Alton Duhon, Alfred A. Hart, Sr., George G. G. Johnson, Selena Johnson, Hercules Pops Joiner, Esmeralda H. Knowles, Pete McDaniel, Herman Mitchell, Jack and Barbara Nicholas, Charles Owens, Jesse James Parker, Calvin Pete, Gary Player, Renee Powell, William Powell, Julius Richardson, Charlie Sifford, Peggy Rhodes White, Teddy Rags Rhodes, Dr. Julius Taylor, Jimmy Lee, Jimmy Lee Jim Thorpe, Paula Pearson Tucker, James Junior Walker, Donny J. Don Wallace, Eddie N. Williams, Stanley A. Wilson, Clueless Wright, William Bill Wright, Paul H. Farquharson, Frederick U. Lightborn, Melvin Ambrose, Guthra, Frederick Robert Sturrock, and the Bahamas Golf Federation, Chicago Women's Golf Club, Pro Duffers USA, Inc., Ridgewood Ladies Golf Club, The Sophisticated Gents, UMES PGM Program, and Wake Robin Golf Club, Inc. And whereas honorees in the AAC and YGHOF include Norman F. Blanco, Yvette Eve Booker, Jeffrey Morris Cunningham, Darius A. Davis, Joseph Dent, Joshua Dent, Malby Marcellus Dillard, IV, Tyanna Jalisa Corrine Jones, Christina Marcellus Lee, Christopher Poppy Lee, Stephanie Luma, Ethan Magnum, Amber Matthews, Vital K. Parker, Anthony Phipps, II, James W. Reed, III, Amari Riley, Morgan Rodriguez, Nyla A. Sims, McKenna, not my McKenna, McKenna Rodriguez, Micah Angelique, Dawn Thomas, Lauren Waller, Taylor N. Waller, and Nylan D. Washington. And whereas Boynton Beach residents Martha Roberta Clark and Nathaniel Nick Harris Clark were awarded the 2014 inaugural Wife and Husband Golfers Award and inducted into the AAGHOF. And whereas two of our very special AAGHOF members, Victoria Vicky Kingdom of Riviera Beach, who is 94 years young, and Herbert Dixon Barto, who is 103 years young, are celebrating with us this week. And whereas our native son, I repeat, our native son, Malachi Knowles from Riviera Beach is the founder of both historic organizations and the Inner City Youth Golfers. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Palm Beach County, Florida, assembled in regular session the second day of May 2003, that this May 25th through the 29th, 2023, in Palm Beach County is hereby proclaimed African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame Week. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Esmeralda Knowles, Executive Director for Inner City Youth Golfers and the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame. I am accompanied by the founder and president, yes, my husband, Malachi Knowles, Riviera Beach Councilperson, Dr. Julia Botell, Inner City Youth Golfers Board members, volunteer, faculty, sports commission, supporters and council, and let me skip back because he's not here today, to the entire Board of Palm Beach County Commissioners, County Administrator Baker, other days persons, and especially our Commissioner, the Honorable Matt Bernard. We are here to share our appreciation and gratitude for the honor you have to proclaim May 25th through the 29th, 2023, as African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame Week. On behalf of the Boards of the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and African-American Collegiate and Youth Golfers Hall of Fame, I C Y G and our parents, thousands of youth, seniors, and volunteers, I say, thank you. We also look forward to breaking ground to build the nation's only historic African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and Inner City Youth Golfers Clubhouse at 125 West 13th Street, Riviera Beach, in the very near future. And we are dedicated to continuing to celebrate the accomplishments of yesterday while paving the way for tomorrow. Thank you.
Mayor Weiss, Commissioners, staff, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Julie Botell. I am a Riviera Beach City Councilperson, but I am not here today representing the council, nor am I here representing the League of Cities. I just became the president of the league, Palm Beach County League, so I'm not here. Richard is here doing a great job representing the league. But I'm here today as an interested individual wanting to thank you for recognizing the African-American Golfers Hall of Fame and the Youth Golfers Hall of Fame. You know, as a retired school superintendent, it's for me always all about the kids. Oh, and while I'm thinking of it... Oh, and while I'm thinking of it, Maria Moreno is not only here because she's a golfer, you know, she's also our Commissioner. We are blessed with having two County Commissioners representing Riviera Beach, Matt Bernard and Maria Moreno, and we thank her always for her support. So, thank you. I want to say that, you know, when I watch these kids play golf, we know they're learning skills, we know they're learning how to play golf, but they're also learning leadership skills. And for me, that's, I'm not a golfer, shh, for me, that's almost more important because Malachi and Essie and the group of people that they have working with them really get to know those kids and help them become future leaders. And so for me, that's what this is about. I'm also hopeful that Riviera Beach will one day have the only freestanding standalone building dedicated to the historic involvement of African Americans in the game of golf. So I thank you again for this recognition, and maybe somebody's, oh, Jim Dent did try one day to teach me how to hold a club. I do remember that, one of those events, but I'd love to learn, Maria. Thanks again.
I got a club up in my office if you want.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernard, Mayor, County Commissioners. Just on behalf of the Palm Beach County Sports Commission, we offer our gratitude to Malachi and Essie, who for two decades have provided an unwavering commitment to provide our county a global Hall of Fame that recognizes the best of sports, true legends, pioneers, and trailblazers. And when we celebrated tourism just a few moments ago, it's special that we're celebrating the African American Golfers Hall of Fame at the same time because the promise of a permanent home within the city of Riviera Beach for this Hall of Fame will undoubtedly be an attraction, an ICYG Learning Center will be a great community asset. So we're excited, and our Sports Commission will continue to be a partner as we look forward to the next two decades of celebrating the best of golf.
Thank you very much, George, and also want to recognize our Commissioner, Michael Barnett, for coming down, also for always supporting the Golfers Hall of Fame. Thank you. [Applause]
Nice picture.
Did you know Wendy left? She was, she left, she left Husker, it's his office.
Yeah, she's staying with Ted.
Stayed with Ted.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie Administrator.
This is the best part of our meet. I love it.
This next part isn't going to be too bad either.
No, it isn't. There are some days.
Alrighty. So, moving on to our regular agenda, Item 5A1, A and B. This is a contract with Horsepower Electric in the amount of $696,969 for the advance warning signage project at Palm Beach International Airport. Is there a motion on this?
I will make a motion, and hopefully in the near future, anything under a million dollars will be on consent.
We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, we have a second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. And we did stop you from sitting in the chair. Thank you.
This time, right.
All right. Moving on to Item 5B1, and this is for Housing and Economic Development. Does anyone need a presentation on this?
I do not.
Nope. Nobody needs a presentation?
Nope.
Okay. We have a motion by, we have a, what? We have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, we have a second by the Vice Mayor. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in.
I just want to give a shout out to Diana Stanley.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, guys. We're honored to do this project.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Good. And now we're moving on to Board Appointments, and we will start on my left with Commissioner Barnett.
I have none. Thank you.
I have none.
Commissioner Moreno?
None at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Bernard?
None, Ms. Mayor.
Commissioner Baxter?
None at this time, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
None at this time.
And I have none. Okay. Moving on to Item Number 7, 7A1, Administration Comments.
Board directives to receive and file?
We have a motion to receive and file. We have a motion by Commissioner Baxter, a second by the Vice Mayor, all in favor, all opposed. That motion carries unanimously, seven to zero, to receive and file.
And our last item, we did receive some inquiries as to the status of legislation going into the last week of session, and Mr. Bunlorn, along with Ed Chase, are here to provide a presentation and to answer any questions that you may have. Todd?
Thank you, Madam Administrator, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the Board. We are in the last week of the legislative session, and I can tell you that this past weekend was an extremely busy one. I just really want to say to Casey Denny, our Legislative Director, who's in Tallahassee, boots on the ground, hasn't left the Capitol for hours and hours and days and days, has been doing an amazing job on our behalf, working. We spent a good part of this weekend working on a number of our legislative issues and bringing some of those in for a landing in this year's budget. I'm not going to spend a lot of time today with you, but just give you a couple of updates on a few bigger picture and some localized issues that we've been working on. Obviously, when we appeared to you mid-session, we talked about a number of the big-picture issues that were out there during the session where they were, and a lot of those have crossed the finish line. Some of them, you know, controversial in nature, items like a six-week abortion ban, issues like death penalty and making it easier on those kinds of decisions in court of law, concealed carry weapons, and et cetera. So we've seen a lot of those, and a lot of that was the Governor's agenda that's been advanced forward by the Legislature. One thing that the Legislature came to a conclusion on yesterday was the state's $116 billion budget. That's the budget that is across their desk, and throughout there, there are a number of big picture and smaller items that are important to us as a state and to each of you individually as district commissioners, both countywide and your individual districts. Some of those items that were priorities of the county, I'm happy to say that we had some great success so far. And I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because we still have the Legislature to vote on that final document this week, and they still have to go to the Governor's Office for the Governor's review. And I know we're going to be spending a lot of time, and you will too, between the Governor's Office on having some conversations there. But items that were priorities of this Board, such as Peanut Island, with $750,000 of funding in the budget, some of our central historic infrastructure, important to Commissioner Barnett's District, a million dollars in that allocation, our transportation disadvantage program that we talked a lot about last week, a million dollars earmarked specifically for Palm Beach County, above and beyond what we normally get from the general pot of funding for TD, our Restore Reentry Program that's in Commissioner Baxter's District, but impacts countywide of a half a million dollars. $3 million for our Green Kay Project that I know that Vice Mayor Sacks has been very supportive of and very interested in. A million and a half for Glades Infrastructure, also in District 6. And then a number of our projects, such as the Lochahatchee River, the Lake Worth Lagoon Initiative, that were fully funded by the Legislature this year. Also, an additional $70 million for the C-51 Project, a really significant piece that kind of connects a number of those water projects that we've been talking about. So we're really excited about that. On the big-picture side, libraries getting close to $20 million in this year's budget. Visit Florida with $80 million, our cultural facilities at just under $32.5 million. So many of those small grants going out to dozens and dozens of cultural facilities throughout your districts are funded in this budget. SCOP funding for the Glades cities to apply for of $9 million for some of our roadways, and then also some of our beaches at $50 million that I know is very important to Commissioners Moreno and Commissioners Woodward. So those are some of those big-picture county issues. I know individually in your districts, we had about three or four different projects in the Glades funded, some water projects, as well as some transportation projects in Belle Glade and also in South Bay, in Riviera Beach, and Commissioner Bernard's District, a really big million-dollar allocation for their utility that we helped work with them, and Sean Pittman and our team helped to bring that home. In Commissioner Moreno's District, $80,000 for the Edna Runner Center for one of their fields, and a million dollars for some of the dredging over by our Peanut Island and working with Palm Beach Shores and Mayor Feers on bringing that across the line. So you've seen, and that's just sort of the tip of the iceberg on some of the smaller, you know, municipal projects that we've worked and supported, as well as a lot of the not-for-profits that have also seen some funding in this year's budget as well. There are a lot of policy issues that are still remaining out there, and Casey has done a great job, I think, keeping us all informed every week in terms of those issues that have moved forward, where some of those upcoming issues are as we look at the week ahead. And in her report to you again this week, talked about a number of those issues that are going to be coming up before you, the big rural economic development package that's in there, that we're excited to see some funding for some of our demucking in the Glades that we're working with DEO on, as well as relieving some of the conditions that they put in some of the funding allocations for some of those smaller rural projects to allow them to have a little less skin in the game in order to get some of those funds back. So real excited about that. But there's still a lot of really difficult stuff in there for local governments. There's still items that, you know, we've pushed back on. We've had a number of issues that were amended during the process, the issue that was a big union issue in terms of direct dues payments and the like. The Legislature exempted out some of our transit authority workers. I know that Dwight and our ATU Union worked extensively with our delegation to take some of that language out, even though that bill is still going to move forward and pass. Assaults on some of the things that we talked about in terms of our local preferences and providing opportunities for people locally to be able to bid and have some higher consideration for that. We were able to remove some of that language out of those bills that are moving forward today as well. The school district is seeing some reduction in their term limits from 12 to eight years in legislation that's moving forward. We have a big elections bill that's out there as well, that has some new requirements in there as well for voter registration and also for our supervisors of elections around the state. So we're still looking at some of those items. On the FRS front, which I know is very important to our Administrator Baker and Sherri Brown as they crunch numbers in the budget and put those together, the Legislature did make some changes to that. They increased some benefits going back several years, increased drop periods, and some other types of specific benefits for employees that we have locally. So it will probably cost us a little bit more in that, it will cost the state more as well, and that's why I think they tampered that reduction down a little bit in terms of the overall cost. At the same time, though, the state managed to provide a 5% salary increase for their statewide employees across the board, as well as providing them some additional funding in this budget to allow for certain correctional officers and the like to get some special increases also that have been hard to fill for the Legislature and historically underpaid workers statewide. And then also a large tax package. I know the Governor put some bold issues that were out there. There wasn't everything in that tax package that the Governor asked for, but a number of back-to-school tax exemptions that we'll see in there, a number of storm-related exemptions that we'll see in there, as well as some more specific for people like me who have kids and, you know, need to get diapers and those things still. So we'll enjoy some of those benefits throughout the year as well. And then also on the storm front, I know that Commissioner Moreno mentioned in her special presentation today, there's going to be some other opportunities in some natural disaster-related legislation that's on the floor this week that we'll be able to help out some of our displaced residents and the like and housing, and also some of our emergency workers that come down to help support those efforts that we see in cleanups around the state for some of those initiatives. So that's really just a small tip of the iceberg of some of the things that we're working on. Casey sent you some updates in terms of items that are on the agenda this week on special order. There are a number of those. And then the budget for the Legislature to vote on was put on their desk this morning, so that document in its entirety is also available for you to peruse, or you can just call us and ask us, and we'll tell you exactly where to find it and what's in there. But I just wanted to again thank this Board for their support so far. Our job is not done. We still have a number of big bills that we are monitoring and working with the Florida Association of Counties, and a lot of work to do once this Friday passes in working with the Governor's Office, and we hope that they, that the Governor, as well as his staff, see the same merits in the projects that we were able to get in this budget as the Florida Legislature did. So, Madam Administrator, that's overview of where we are right now legislatively. And thank you to Ed, too, as well. Ed's been up there in Tallahassee. He came down here today to assist with some of these updates as well, but he has been boots on the ground with Casey and bringing a number of these issues. But I just can't say enough about our contract team and our team in-house, and DeBora and the work she's doing, and Vicky Nolan as well. It's been a great team effort, and our legislative delegation has really come together and worked really strong to make sure that we were able to get a number of these priorities funded for the county as well as for their respective districts.
Thank you very much. We have some questions. Vice Mayor Sacks, and then Commissioner Woodward.
I just wanted to thank you and your team. It's a tough job up there at whatever session it is, and this one in particularly, I think, has been a real uphill battle, but listening and reading to what you've brought home is very impressive. It's very impressive. At the end of the day, after signing die, which probably will go as scheduled, you would think, Todd? I probably will have some questions, and maybe folks here will as well, in terms of the effects of some of the bills that have already been signed into law, such as the Live Local bill, but many others as well. So maybe at some point later down, you know, our session here, we can review some of those in terms of the effect that it has on our policies, our authority, and the budget that we work within. So I anticipate going over those pretty specifically when signing die is over and the team is back and Ms. Baker tells us we have this time to review it, because we have been affected, without a doubt. And, but I've seen you fellows up there in action before, and I know your team is working really, really hard, and thank you for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and we will be coming back to the BCC with a much more comprehensive overview. This is just sort of a little high-level taste of some of the things that are still out there, but our team will be here to do a deeper dive in those bills, as well as a complete summary report for you as well that we'll submit of all of the impacts of legislation facing the county.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized, and then we'll have Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one question. Where is the bill on sovereign immunity? Where does that stand right now?
Yeah, so the sovereign immunity, yeah. I always hate saying these kinds of things when you still have a few days left in the legislative session, but that was one where, you know, we had two different bills, both on the House and Senate side. For the most part, that bill, we don't think is going to kind of see the light of day, you know, for the next couple of days, but I like to caveat all of these responses. You know, lots of things happened in the last few days of legislative session, but I don't believe that, you know, that one is going to make it over the finish line.
Commissioner Moreno.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, thank you. The county does an excellent job partnering with our nonprofits to help, like you did with the Tutorial Center, and an $80,000 grant for them is impactful, whereas $3 million to Green Kay is impactful. So no matter-
as well as a complete summary report for you as well that we'll submit of all of the impacts of legislation facing the county.
Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized. And then, we'll have Commissioner Marino.
Thank you, Mayor. I did have one question. Where is the bill on sovereign immunity? Where does that stand right now?
Yeah, so the sovereign immunity. Yeah. I always hate saying these kinds of things when you still have a few days left in the legislative session. But that was one where, you know, we had two different bills, both in the House and Senate side. For the most part, that bill, we don't think, is going to kind of see the light of day, you know, for the next couple of days. But I like to caveat all of these responses. You know, lots of things happened in the last few days of legislative session. But I don't believe that, you know, that one is going to make it over the finish line.
Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, thank you. The county does an excellent job partnering with our nonprofits to help, like you did with the Tutorial Center. And an $80,000 grant for them is impactful, whereas $3 million to Green Kaye is impactful. So, no matter the dollar amount, large or small, I just want to say thank you for partnering with all of the agencies, the local agencies in the area, using some of our resources, meaning our manpower and our man-hours, to help them because rising tide lifts all boats. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank Todd, DeBora, Ed, Casey. All of you have done such an amazing job answering all my questions and working hard for us, the county. And I just can't thank you enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Alright, well, thank you very much, Mr. Von Lauren. Appreciate the update and appreciate the good work of your team up in Tallahassee on behalf of the citizens of Palm Beach County.
Thank you, Mayor. And just the work that you have all done in laying the groundwork in Tallahassee for a number of these issues, getting up there right at the beginning of session, I think was incredibly valuable to really laying those priorities out to our legislators, both in our delegation and statewide. And we really appreciate every effort of every single one of you. I mean, phone calls, boots on the ground. We still have a lot of work to do here, but we look forward to getting back to you with a more comprehensive update. And again, thank you, Casey and the team for everything that you're doing. Great work so far.
Alright, thank you. Administrator Baker, does that conclude your remarks? Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on, County Attorney. Nothing from the County Attorney. Okay, we're moving on to Commissioner comments. And we will start on the right over here to Commissioner Baxter.
I just want to say thank you for everyone's hard work. Have a great one.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. As we know, that May is Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month, Haitian Heritage Month and Jewish American Heritage Month. And I urge our residents to continue to visit our Palm Beach County Public Library System as they always have different programs throughout the whole different months to continue to provide information for our residents. And lastly, Commissioner Marino had mentioned the response from the city of West Palm Beach regarding the tornado. And so, just want to personally thank Mayor Keith James, the Fire Chief and the entire West Palm Beach Fire Department for dispatching so quickly and being there. Because I spoke to a couple of the firefighters and they were just basically there for the residents of Palm Beach Gardens immediately. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. And to continue with that, I do want to do a shout out to the Red Cross and Gardens Presbyterian Church. The Red Cross was onsite immediately and actually set up in the North Palm Clubhouse that was right next to Sanctuary Cove. So, all the folks in Sanctuary Cove, and you've seen all the pictures on TV, had access immediately. Because they did pull the meter on one of those buildings and condemn it. One building lost the roof. And so, just to thank you. And Gardens Presbyterian Church, I know that they are actually housing some folks for the next couple of days, showers and whatnot. So, a thank you to them. And also, just a general thank you to all of the public works and police and fire and everybody work together. And that's really, as a county, I know we bicker. The counties and the cities bicker. We're like children and families. But you see it all the time in a crisis when everyone does come together and partner. So, I do want to just say thank you to all. Okay, and on behalf of the Mayor, I would like to request approval for an off-site proclamation declaring May 2023 as Audubon Everglades Purple Martin Awareness Month and also approval for an off-site proclamation declaring June 4, 2023, as Holocaust Survivor Day. Now, it's off-site.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Commissioner Baxter. All in favor, all oppose. That motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. Alright, moving on. Commissioner Woodward, you're recognized.
Yes, I also have a request for approval for an off-site proclamation declaring May 6, 2023 as K O P Mentoring Network Ladies of Distinction Day for an off-site proclamation.
We have a motion by Commissioner Woodward, a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all oppose. That motion carries seven to zero. Commissioner, are you, okay. Commissioner Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you. No comments.
Okay. Vice Mayor, you're recognized.
Thank you so much. And after looking at all of the special presentations today and seeing the room so full of people who are part of our county and then hearing how well we're doing in the state, hearing how well the cities took over after the situation with the storms,